Okay, we're all in? All right. So it's Kevin. So we might as well just call the meeting to order and get going. My name is -- good evening and welcome to the May 20, 2020 meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. The next item is Item Three, Public Comment, and we're going to have public comment the same as we've had since we began these meetings back in March. What we will do is ask Hillary, the Executive Secretary, to unmute all of the microphones, and then anyone wishing to speak in public comment should state their name, and if they're dialing in, state their last four digits of their phone number, and then we will mute all the lines again, and we'll go down the line or go down with each person who's stated an intention to speak at Citizen Speak, so we don't have too many lines unmuted at once. So we're going to unmute all the lines, and then if you wish to speak at Citizen Speak, please state your name, and if you're on the phone, the last four digits of your phone number. So Hillary, please unmute all the lines, and I'll ask anyone wishing to speak at Citizen Speak to state their name.
Walter Timmeltick.
Cindy Christensen.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak at Citizen Speak? Here none. Hillary, could you mute all the lines except for the members and Mr. Dennehy and Senator Timmeltick?
Thank you very much, Chair Zulus, to Select Board Member Wells, Select Board Member Conlon, Select Board Member Collins, and Select Board Member Farrington, and of course, our town administrator, Mr. Dennehy. Thank you very much. Very simply, I'd like to present the board and the citizens of the town with a legislative update. On April 17th, the legislature, the governor, of course, signed into law that the great general court had put forth. It passed, of course, both the Senate and the House. Senate Bill 2640, which is an act to provide liability protections for health care workers and facilities during the COVID-19 pandemic. Under this legislation, health care professionals, facilities, and volunteer organizations assisting in the Commonwealth's efforts to respond and treat COVID-19 during a state emergency would be protected from suit and civil liability for alleged damages related to the virus. Health care facilities and professionals would still be subject to consumer complaints brought by the Attorney General, and protections would not extend to acts of negligence, recklessness, or intent to harm or acts of discrimination. These protections will apply retroactively to March 10, 2020, and remain in effect for the duration of the state of emergency. Senate Bill 2645, an act providing for virtual notarization to address challenges faced related to COVID-19, was signed into law on April 23, 2020, and of course, it was passed by both the Senate and the House. It allows for video conferencing by notary publics to accomplish important business transactions during the state of emergency. House Bill 4593, an act to facilitate the delay of the income tax filing deadline, was signed into law on May 15, 2020, and of course, it was passed by both the House and the Senate. This bill complements legislative action taken in early April to extend the income tax filing deadline to July 15, 2020. The delayed tax deadline was designed to provide flexibility to residents and families across the Commonwealth amid the COVID-19 state of emergency. The extension mayors' actions taken on the federal levels. And to ensure budgetary stability, the bill allows the treasurer to borrow during the fiscal year 2020 to meet financial obligations that would normally be fulfilled through income tax filings. On that note, last week, the state senate voted for a short-term borrowing bill. I was in the state senate chamber voting yes, and that will enable the state to, just as the title indicates, engage in short-term borrowing due to the fact that we are experiencing cash flow issues due to the delay of the income tax filing until July 15. The bill required a roll-call vote. It was recorded, and certain members, due to provisions that were changed in the rules of the senate, voted in terms of sending a letter to the senate clerk due to health concerns. Certain members voted from their offices, which is already in the senate rules, given health challenges, and many of us, like myself, were in the chamber. Senate Bill 2467, an act providing assistance to vulnerable populations during the COVID-19 emergency. This is in progress. The senate engrossed, which is the most important legislative hurdle, on April 23. It has been sent to House Ways and Means. The House, of course, is working on this measure now. In essence, the senate bill, for the period of time from the passage of this act until 120 days after the passage of this act or later if postponed by the governor, or 45 days after the termination of the governor's March 10, 2020 state of emergency declaration, whichever is sooner. This initiative, as produced by the state senate, prohibits the Department of Transitional Assistance from denying a family assistance under transitional aid to families with dependent children solely because the family's countable resources exceed $5,000, and it also prohibits the Department of Transitional Assistance from denying a person assistance under emergency aid to the elderly, disabled, and children solely because the person's countable resources exceed the allowable limit. Senate Bill 2673, an act relative to municipal governance during the COVID-19 emergency. The senate engrossed this bill on May 4. In each and every instance of the initiatives that I've just delineated to you, I have supported each and every one. It was, as I mentioned, engrossed on May 4 and sent to House Ways and Means. This is also commonly referred to as a municipal relief package three. It allows select boards of a town not having a representative town meeting, form of government to vote in consultation, and with the approval of the town moderator, to prescribe the number of voters necessary to constitute a quorum at any town meeting held from the governor's March 10, 2020 declaration of a state of emergency. And Chair Zulus, you and I discussed this measure last week. It also requires the select board to publish notice of its intention to consider an adjustment of town meeting quorum requirements not less than seven days before the vote of the select board, and to provide for adequate means of public access that will allow interested members of the public to follow the deliberations. It also limits a town meeting held with a reduced quorum to take up only those matters related to their budget or necessary to meet a federal deadline, and prohibits warrant articles other than those adopted by the select board. Allows the moderator in a town having a representative town meeting form of government to request the town meetings to be held through remote participation, including but not limited to, by means of a video or telephone conference and platform, if the moderator determines that during the governor's March 10, 2020 declaration of a state of emergency, it is not possible to safely assemble the town meeting members and interested members of the public in a common location. Also requires a platform used by a town meeting for remote participation to provide for, one, the moderated town meeting members, town officials, and any other interested members of the public to identify and hear the moderator, and each town meeting member who attends and participates in the town meeting, as well as any other individuals; two, the ability to determine whether a quorum is present; three, a town meeting member, town official, or other individual to request recognition by the moderator without prior authorization, provided, however, that the request is visible or audible to the public in real time; and four, the moderator to determine when a town meeting member wishes to be recognized to speak, make a motion, raise a point of order, or object to a request for unanimous consent; and five, the moderator to recognize a town meeting member, town official, or other individual to speak and enable that person to speak; six, the ability to conduct a roll-call vote; seven, any interested member of the public to access the meeting remotely, and eight, the town meeting to be recorded. Also requires registered voters reuniting in the town wishing to participate in a remote town meeting to submit a request to participate to the town clerk not less than 48 hours in advance of the town meeting. Those are just some of the items that we believe and deem to be important to Massachusetts State Senate for municipal relief package three. As always, I am available by email or phone call to talk with any member of our general public, any citizen, any constituent, and of course, any of my partners at local level to go further. Also, Senate Bill 2695, an act addressing COVID-19 data collection and disparities in treatment. The senate engrossed this bill on May 11, 2020. I as well supported this, along with a majority of my colleagues. It increases the amount of statewide publicly available data as it relates to the coronavirus and establishes a task force to study and make policy recommendations to address health disparities for underserved and underrepresented communities during the pandemic. This is something that I believe is very important. The Massachusetts State Senate, my colleagues, consider this to be a vital piece of legislation for all of us around the Commonwealth. Under this bill, the Department of Public Health will be required to compile, collect, and issue daily online reports on the number of people tested for COVID-19, positive cases, hospitalizations, and deaths, along with the gender, race, ethnicity, primary residence, occupation, disability, age, and primary language of each case. To ensure a comprehensive understanding of cases statewide, this legislation also requires that daily reports include data and demographic information from municipalities and counties with more than 25 positive cases. All DPH licensed nursing homes, assisted living facilities licensed by the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, as well as state and county correctional facilities. Facility-specific information will be made publicly available while maintaining individual privacy. In addition to requiring greater data collection, the bill requires the Executive Office of Health and Human Services to describe the actions it is taking to address disparities identified through the data collected. In response to increasing concerns about the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on communities of color and disproportionately impacted populations, the legislation also establishes a task force to study and make policy recommendations as to how to address these health disparities. The task force will be required to issue an interim report by June 1, 2020, with a final report due date of August 1, 2020. And that, again, was engrossed by the state senate on May 11 with the full support of the membership. And with that, Mr. Chair, if I may touch briefly on budgetary matters. Two weeks ago, we were briefed by our senate Ways and Means Chair regarding fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021. Currently, our stabilization fund, which is often referred to as the rainy day fund, stands at $3.5 billion, which is a record for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and one of the largest stabilization funds of any state in the Union. Fiscal year 2020, which we are all well aware ends on July 1. Currently, a deficit for this fiscal year 2020, which has been brought on by the March 10 declaration of a state of emergency, which shut down all businesses that were deemed by the governor to be nonessential, a deficit right now stands at between $400 to $500 million. Our Ways and Means Chair, Mike Rodrick, the senator from Westport, has stated that by July 1, that this deficit for FY 2020 could balloon to $800 million. Fiscal year 2021 projections, as of right now, the deficit is projected to be at between $4.6 billion to $6 billion. Of course, our stabilization fund is robust, and we certainly will infuse monies from the stabilization fund in FY 2020 to make broad falls, but we have to be mindful of the fact that FY 2021, as I just alluded to, the numbers are looking grim. And of course, bond rating, a big part of our bond rating, as determined by Wall Street, is based on the robust nature of our stabilization fund. So those are the fiscal numbers that we are looking at right now. Everything right now, in my estimation, hinges on two things. Number one, when the economy reopens, and how quickly the economy regains its footing here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the second item, which is crucial, is as to whether or not the United States Congress and the federal government send a third stimulus package our way, which would involve billions of dollars going to state governments across the country. The U.S. House, just recently, and I commend them for this, passed a stimulus bill, a third stimulus bill, that directed monies, amongst other things, to the states. That has not been acted upon in the United States senate and may not. That is still, I believe, a very fluid situation. So those are the dynamics in terms of the budgeting of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as I see them, and a snapshot of legislation that either has been passed and signed into law by the governor or is right now working its way through the legislative process. And to Chair Zulus and each and every member of this board, select board, thank you very much for what you do on a daily basis. And to each and every partner in government, I believe, town of Milton, its town government and its elected officials have stepped up in a tremendous way during what is the most challenging time I've witnessed in my lifetime. So I thank you all for that.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for that report. Certainly, a lot of things that, legislation that we're keeping our eye on with the budget and with the town meeting and with the opportunity to have access to funding. So appreciate all your work, and you should probably try to do something to take care of your voice. It sounds like a strength fail, so.
Yeah, the voice is sounding allergy season. It's sounding a little rough, but thank you very much. But despite the nature of my voice, more than happy to answer any questions and.
Well, do any of the members have any questions then for the Senator?
I have no questions, but the budget information is helpful, so thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Conlon.
All right. Well, thank you, Senator. Much appreciated. We'll obviously be in touch. We know you've been in touch with us throughout this, certainly on a weekly basis, almost on a daily basis, for all your work on this. And thank you for giving us the update this evening. Hillary, I'm going to ask you to mute all the lines except for the board members now and Ms. Christensen, Cindy Christensen for Citizen Speak.
Hi, this is Cindy. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you're coming in.
Okay, Cindy Christensen, 59 Collumore Street. Several Milton residents and regional friends of mine listened in on last week's MCAC executive meeting. At that meeting, Milton MCAC Rep. Tom Dougherty once again reported that the runway for LEA is for the flight path that affects the west side of Milton. He is wrong. Mr. Dougherty has identified the incorrect RNA path over Milton since the EA was first announced, to you and to the public both. Other residents, and I sat in the same MCAC meeting that he did when the FAA presented the information on the 4L EA. I've written to him and to you to clarify that the EA will be conducted on the 4L approach path that goes through the middle of town, not the one on the west side of town. Milton can't afford to continue this misinformation. Also, at the meeting, RCAC Rep. repeated that Milton needs for Dr. Hansman of the MIT Contract Port to come to Milton to see where the planes are flying. This is because he insists that the 4R and 4L paths merged within 500 feet of each other over his home. He's also wrong about that. And yet, you have submitted reports, letters, and more reports to the FAA and Massport with diagrams of this incorrect flight path as if they are truths. It's embarrassing. Even people in other communities know that this is wrong. If the board cannot get these two simple things right, how will you ever do right by Milton residents when action on the EA is required? And it's not just these two persistent problems that the select board seems allergic to dealing with or fixing. You submitted recommendations to the FAA that, quote, "supports a path change for departures that will increase the noise burden over the town." When Boston Fair skies pointed this out and asked that you send a correction to the FAA, this board refused and instead tried to convince town residents that you can create your own definition of the word "support" to mean a seat at the table. No, you don't get to do that, especially not with the FAA and Massport. You have believed falsehoods about nonexistent deadlines, which then left no time for adequate public input. This board is messing with my and other residents' health, quality of life, and property values with your apparent inability to act to correct your and Mr. Dougherty's mistakes and misinformation. I will place a set of questions onto the Zoom chat function. I've tried to get answers to these questions in other ways, but those attempts have failed. I would appreciate answers to my questions, either from the board or from Mr. Dougherty during the MCAC update part of your meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Hillary, if you could mute all the microphones except for the board and Mr. Dennehy, please. And we will, without objection, we need to have our COVID-19 update, but we do have a couple of visitors who we'd like to get to. So without objection, I'd like to move Item Five, I'm sorry, Item Six up to Item Four. Item Six is the update on the Milton Music Fest with Lynda Lee Sheridan and Eric Miller. And Hillary, if you could unmute Ms. Sheridan and Miller for Item Six, the update on the Milton Music Fest. And I see Mr. Miller is unmuted and Ms. Sheridan is unmuted.
Great. Thank you so much for allowing us to join you this evening. Eric and I are here on behalf of the We Are Milton Board, and unfortunately, we're coming with some sad but not unexpected news, I think. We have lamented and gone over all of our options, but it seems that we must cancel our Milton Music Fest and Celtic Sunday this year. It was scheduled for the end of June, and we talked about maybe postponing it to the fall, but with all the uncertainty that is surrounding that, it just doesn't seem like it's really a prudent decision for us to make at this time. So with very heavy hearts, we are postponing. We have a goal every year of providing a fun and family event on Saturday and a beautiful day of Celtic music on Sunday, but safety is our number one priority, and we can't assure the safety of all of our participants. Our numbers have grown in the past few years, which is a good thing, but honestly, it creates more of a challenge for us in terms of safety. So there will be no event this year, unfortunately, and we look forward to June 26 and 27 of 2021, if you would like to mark your calendars now. And I think Eric is going to say a few words.
We'll definitely have the information updated on the websites, miltonmusicfest.org, and we'll keep everybody updated. That information will be posted soon. Unfortunately, right now, it actually doesn't have that information yet, but we will keep it updated, keep everybody engaged, and we'll also update the Facebook page for our group as well. So please check back regularly and look forward to seeing everybody next year.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. And I know Mr. Wells is a major force in this effort. So do any of the members have any comments or questions for Ms. Sheridan?
I just want to thank the both for this. You know, we met a lot. It's a great committee of all residents, and it's become a major event, as Eric and Lynda Lee know. Great background, Lynda Lee, and it brings thousands of people every year. But we'll be back in 2021 in our Phase Four New Normal and Bigger and Better with great music and great fireworks.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Any other questions or comments from the members?
I just have a minor comment. Lynda Lee, I like your background a lot better than I like my background. I've been saying that Melinda has the best background at our meetings, but I think yours is even better with the waterfront view there, so very nice. But thank you all for your efforts. It's too bad, but we understand the reasoning.
Thanks so much for your ongoing support. We really appreciate it.
And thank you all for, it's a major undertaking for all your work, you and Mr. Miller and Mr. Wells, Brian Kelly and Glenn Pavlicek are involved.
Kathy Egan.
Yep. So thank you to all of them, and we'll look forward to it next year.
Great.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Going back to Item Four, the COVID-19 update. First item that we have under this is a discussion of the reopening roadmap, and I think I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dennehy.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As most of you are aware, if not all of you, the governor came out with his four-phase reopening document that his advisory board spent tireless effort undertaking. We thank them for that. Monday, we held a department head meeting at town hall to discuss the next steps for each of the departments, and it's going to be slow and steady, is the phrase. We're working very closely with the Health Department, obviously, understanding that public safety remains the major, if not the only, priority for both employees and the public with anything we do. There are some things that will be happening soon. The library announced that they'll be resuming curbside services beginning next Tuesday. Curbside services will be available Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., and they've also extended their due dates to June 30. So we thank them for that. Anyone who needs more information regarding this program can call the library at 617-898-4954. Today, the parks commissioners met at 12 noon. Obviously, our parks have been in a very passive and somewhat shutdown state throughout this pandemic. The guidance from the state isn't quite complete when it comes to summer camps and recreation. We did see recreation as a part of Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. What we should probably do is post the governor's report on the town's website, so I'll make a mental note to do that tomorrow. For those that haven't seen it, it's a 29-page document. Again, it's very in-depth. It comes in stages, but in fairness to the parks commissioners, the guidance with respect to some of the recreation in town, particularly summer camps. Lieutenant Governor, we were on a call on Monday with the lieutenant governor, which we talked about Monday with this board. They are due to release that report on Tuesday, which gives guidance. So unfortunately, for Paul D'Amano and all those people working so hard to put the summer camps together, Glenn Pavlicek and Mary Gormley at the schools, it's still in a bit of a holding pattern. They will be able to make some more decisive decisions with respect to our playgrounds and our equipment, but again, we are still in a passive mode when it comes to the park. Our parks in town, the playground equipment, tennis courts, street hockey courts, and basketball courts still remain closed, but next week, when this report is released, the parks commissioners will meet again next Wednesday to revisit that. Some of the other departments that are working on some things had a very good conversation with our Council on Aging Director Christine Stanton today. She's working on some outdoor activity. They've been working on some Zoom conferencing, not quite getting the attention that she thought it may, but now with the good weather and the amount of land that she has in, both in her parking lot, which has become a bicycle track for the neighborhood. I went through there today. It's very vibrant with young kids using bikes and stuff. And the abutting property over at Walnut Street, I think there's something she can do with our aging population with social distancing going forward. And then we have some very important dates coming up, but the gist of the story is basically we're waiting for a little more guidance. Town Hall is still going to be closed and town buildings to the public, and we're waiting for Phase Two to come our way. Obviously, there's a lot of work to be done by consolidated facilities. Bill Ritchie's group is purchasing some sanitation supplies. There are some offices that will be using the Plexiglas you see in many of the retail outlets that you may have visited. So we're undertaking those steps and thinking that possibly in Phase Three or Phase Four that we can start showing the public our buildings again.
Before we get to questions, Mike, did you, I'm sorry, did you mention the libraries? The library?
Yes. Yeah, so the libraries will be open Tuesday, yeah, for curbside services.
Right, right, right. Okay. Sorry about that. Questions and comments from the members?
I had actually reached out to Dr. Hart at the Chamber, and I haven't heard back yet, but I'm assuming that they'll be filling out the paperwork that's up on the state's website and then working with the Health Department. Is that?
Correct, yeah. Unfortunately, Caroline's workload, Carolina nurse staff, their workload is probably going to accelerate, if you can believe that.
Right, no.
Businesses that are opening, and then each of these, each of these town departments, she gives them her blessing. We actually had an application for a wedding with less than 10 people in the gazebo. than 10 people in the gazebo on Saturday. So she's taking each issue face by case. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank Caroline and her wonderful staff, because their work is just beginning again, unfortunately.
Well, that was my concern, is that how are they going to handle all of this? And is there something they need that we could somehow provide? I don't know.
We continue to ask, and we did a public service announcement today. Mike and I can tell you, we did a wellness check on her, and she's fantastic, as always. So just thank you, Caroline. And yeah, so each of those businesses are going to have to make sure that they follow the governor's ordinances with their openings and the protocols that need to be in place, and they need to be enforced and signed off by the Health Department.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. I know that our last meeting, Ms. Dennehy had brought up a couple of requests for outside seating. Mayor Walsh has talked very proactively about this in the city. Are we going to put this on our agenda, or how are we going to move? Or is this an official request yet? I believe one was Newcombe Farms and the other is Steel and Ryan.
Yes. So thank you for that, Mr. Wells. I probably should have updated that. The building commissioner is working on the specifics with those two entities regarding their outside space. I don't think we need board approval because it's on private property.
Right, they're both.
Yeah, both of them won't touch the public right away. So he's working through the specifics, which each, both Steel and Ryan and Newcombe Farms are in the process. They haven't already submitted documents and plans to Mr. Pramdeck. And obviously, those will also need sign off from the Health Department.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the members? Before we move on, during our public service announcement this morning, Caroline Cancela told us she wasn't going to be able to make it tonight. She'll give us a report next week. She did relay two things. The number of cases in Milton has increased to 286 as of today, and she also reported that a total of 15 residents had succumbed, 15 in total, which I think is an increase from what she reported to us before of 10. So the number of those who have succumbed is 50 at this point. So it's appropriate, I think, for us to take a moment to, moment of silence for those that have succumbed to the COVID-19. Thank you for that. And she can give a more fulsome report next week. She also reported, as she has in the past, that most of the people who contracted the virus in Milton have either recovered or have had symptoms on the mild side. But she'll give us a more fulsome report. And she's been working with Alan Bishop of our Engineering Department to create reports that she expects to have in the beginning of June that will provide a more, as you said, a more fulsome view of the statistics that have marked this since the beginning of March. So item, item 4B is a discussion of the rent abatement for town lessees. We received a letter from the Milton Arts Center requesting an abatement of their rent for June. We had granted a rent abatement for all of our lessees, the Milton Arts Center, the Yacht Club, and the Discovery Schoolhouse for April and May. The Milton Arts Center has requested an additional abatement for June. They have informed us that they have, they shut down as of March 13. And they've canceled all classes and events through June. They were able to get a small grant from the SBA, an EIDL grant from the SBA to pay utilities and landscaping, but they do have significant financial challenges. They are looking towards putting their classes online. And so they've requested that we grant another abatement for June. So comments and questions from the members?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we abate the rent of the Milton Arts Center for the month of June 2020.
Second.
This has been made, second, and any further discussion?
I think we should take the other, if the others should request it, we did grant them for the other two that you mentioned. Maybe we should take it on a case-by-case basis. I don't know what the status is at the school, whether, it's probably similar to the Art Center. But the Yacht Club, it's possible, I know they're going to be putting boats in the water. It's possible that they're in a different situation. So I think we should evaluate them case by case. But for the Art Center, I think they've provided enough information to us that we should go ahead and abate their rent for the month of June.
I agree with Ms. Collins.
Motion's been made, and second, and any further discussion? Along those lines, maybe, Mike Dennehy, maybe we could reach out to the Discovery School and the Yacht Club before a meeting next week, in the situation is for June.
Understanding that the Milton Yacht Club also has a cease and desist order on the 25 wharf address due to the COVID, it was a member's spouse that contracted COVID-19. We had a brief discussion about it. The Board of Health and the Health Director has basically closed that building until further notice.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made, and second, and this could be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
All right. So we will, if we have a lessees next week. We'll see the update on the virtual town meeting. I see Frank Schroth and Bob His. So if you could unmute Frank Schroth and Bob His, and to find out where our update is on our planning for a virtual town meeting. Mr. His, are you taking the lead here?
I will take the lead. So thank you, Mr. Chair. So a few updates. The committee chaired by Frank Schroth, our advisory committee, has completed the design. We believe we've come up with a design using Zoom technology that approximates as much as possible an in-person town meeting. He's scheduled, we'll call it a user test, for tomorrow with a few town meeting members that we believe could help us give us feedback on the design and assess its workability. As we've worked through this and looked in particular at the voting technology, given the number of articles that have now been published in the warrant of 39, and some requirements of the voting part of the technology, which is called polling and Zoom, we're limited to 25 polls or votes per night. So even with a consent agenda, which I'm going to apply liberally, more liberally than in prior years, I think we're looking at two shorter meetings in order to get all 39 articles complete under a virtual town meeting approach. We can talk more about that if you'd like, but just wanted to alert the group. So it wouldn't be one three-hour, it might be two, one and a half, for example, or a one and a half, two the first night, one the second night, something like that. The town clerk has sent out a letter yesterday, Tuesday, to all the town meeting members and ex officios, asking them for their email address, because we're going to need that to register people, and to reply to the survey on their comfort level with participating in Zoom meeting, their availability of both good internet and laptop and with microphones. So that should arrive in the mail today or tomorrow. We only got a 30% response on the first email we sent out, so we're looking for a greater response. Because one of the ways we're going to ensure that only voters, eligible voters, town meeting members, ex officios can vote, is to preregister them all. So we really need to have this response from folks in order to be able to have a secure voting experience. I'll pause and turn to any questions on those things before I turn to Frank for some of his updates.
Questions or comments from the members? Katie, you're muted. Did you have something?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Melinda?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, Bob, on we go.
Frank?
Not, no, not too much to add. I'm here and available. I'm here to support the moderator. And I would like to just emphasize that if there's one area where I have some concern, it's in this letter that goes out and trying to be able to identify those town meeting members whose level of comfort with the technology is low and/or who may not have access to it. The sooner we can identify those people and make some accommodation for them, the better. And we do have some thoughts in terms of how we'll do it, but we need to get that down to a number we can understand. And while I have the floor, I do want to give a shout out to Mike Lynch and Hillary Wade, in particular, who've been just tremendous help. I also want to acknowledge the Milton Public Library. As you know, I'm quite fond of it, but they are, having three of their staff members will be functioning as a tech support help desk the night of town meeting to help members who might be having trouble with access or with the technology. And that's really it for me. I want to just, that's it. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
That's great. Thank you, Frank. Any questions or comments from the members? Mr. Wells?
So the moderator now has a chief of staff. Congratulations, Frank.
Yes, we've agreed to split my compensation. And he's worth every penny.
You can pick it, you can pick it up at full at the town treasurer's office tomorrow.
That's right. By the way, in the library, once some feedback we did get is that some members have sufficient computer equipment but poor internet. So Mr. Adamscheck has agreed to open up the library. We're going to schedule it on a first come, first register, first available basis. So we'll be able to have either bring your own device and log into the Wi-Fi or use one of the computers that's there, at least be able to participate for those members that don't have the technology at home and would like to do so. Obviously, we can't handle 288 people, but if there's a dozen or so, we'll be able to find spaces in the library to distance people out and be able to accommodate. My last update is I did receive a note from one of the other moderators on this Mass Moderators Committee, and it was an update from one of the reps on House Ways and Means and the status of the legislation that Senator Timely referred to. So just to summarize, this rep said that we've received a ton of requests from various municipalities to add things to the bill since we received it from the Senate. We're weighing whether we can include any of those requested changes, but I'm confident we'll bring the bill to the floor soon. So we've been going kind of dark on us for a while. It's been there, I think it's in its third week now. And as you know, this is the enabling legislation. So if soon means early next week, good, we'll proceed as planned. My recommendation for this group is that if we don't have an answer by June 1, which is two weeks before town meeting, I think we ought to call an audible and cancel the town virtual approach and look at one of the two approaches we were discussing before of going in person, either in the field house at Milton High or at the football stadium at Milton High. Otherwise, we'd be going down a path of conducting a virtual town meeting, which we would have to then have submit to the legislature for approval, which of course is the organization that didn't approve conducting a virtual town meeting. So it seems like a very, I discussed with Kevin Freitag, it seems like a high-risk approach to risk all of our votes and all of our effort on going forward without the legislation. There are a couple towns doing so. I don't think it would be prudent for us to follow that same path. They're on a different path. So that's my advice. June 1, we decide where we are. If we got the legislation, go forward. If we don't, we'll all go over in a few weeks.
Questions or comments from the members?
I have one, but I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
So Bob, you had talked, was it our last meeting about, well, first off, I don't know which email chain I was following today. There's definitely a sense of fear, even amongst some elected officials, to go into a town meeting in present, you know, personally going to one. You had mentioned the Brookline route, where they have the virtual voted and then encompass that action into an actual town meeting on a later date. Is that one of the ones you're referring to, of the road you don't want to get on now?
Yes, both Brookline and Lexington, they're going to go down the virtual route, legislation or not.
Right.
What they'll have to do, is my understanding, and Kevin can weigh in, is they would have to then submit their results to the legislature as a home action petition to approve on the votes that were conducted at town meeting. And my concern with that is, if the legislature's not passing the enabling law, and we then have to go, there's some risk to it, then we have to go back to that body and say, yeah, we know you told us not to do a virtual town meeting, but we did it anyways, so we just sign off on what we did. And that seems to be a high risk to put our town meeting results and the budget and everything else we're trying to do.
Okay.
On that risk.
I get it. I didn't, I don't think it was elaborated that much, the legislative process. When I first, when you first presented it last week, I thought about, oh, that might be, you know, it's almost like you take the vote, then suspend it, and when you come back, you engross that, that action into the regular meeting. But you're right, that's kind of an uphill climb to do that. But I think, just for all of us, for my colleagues in, and for you in, for Frank, I think anything that we try to do inside in the month of June is going to be a problem. Even if something as big as the field house, just, when you look at this, Mr. Dennehy talked about some of the things that have to be done public health-wise to make even a smaller things happen, no matter something with 250 people, I think that's another uphill battle. It may even be steeper than the Brookline one. So I don't envy you in this, but let's hope that legislation gets passed by the first.
Yeah. Other comments or questions from the members?
Thank you again for all your efforts. You too, Frank.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions from the members? The only thing I'd suggest, Bob, is if we could make June 3, which is the Wednesday, the drop dead date, we could make that the drop dead date at our meeting on the 3. And I will just say for the record, in our letters to the legislature, we didn't ask for anything else. We just said, pass it. So hopefully, hopefully that will be the predominant view, just to pass it, so we can at least have a virtual town meeting. So.
Yeah, I sent a note to Representative Driscoll this week, asking for his support in the same urgency tone. I agree with you.
So thank you for all your efforts. And we'll probably have a meeting next week. We haven't scheduled it yet, but it's on, it's on the, it was our normal meeting, so we'll probably go forward with it. But we'll probably see you next week.
Very good. We'll be here. All right.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, everybody. Stay well.
Thank you.
All right. Item, item five, back item five, which is the Ponce and Neighbors Together Fund. I circulated earlier today an updated version of a, an understanding between the parties. We'd had a kind of a well-developed contract or agreement last week. We had suggested that it could be a little less formal, with fewer legal obligations to it, because we're trying to come together. What this is, the Ponce and Neighbors Together Fund, is a fund bringing together the United Way, the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, Courageous Conversations towards racial justice, the town of Milton, and the Boston neighborhoods of Mattapan, Dorchester, and Hyde Park, represented by Boston City Councilors Andrea Campbell and Ricardo Arroyo. The idea is to create a community fund with these, our neighbors to help those who are most in need during this crisis. And there was, we had a call today with representatives of the city councilors, of the United Way, of the Interfaith Clergy Association, and Courageous Conversations. I think there was general support for this approach, this brief description of what the fund would entail, what United Way would do, and what the town of Milton and these neighborhoods in the city of Boston would do in order to help this fund and help those who are most needy in our communities. The hope is that The hope is that this will, if there's, if there's general agreement among this board, and what you have in front of you is a document that has been vetted by town council. If there's general consensus and agreement by this board, the hope is that this this fund and the webpage and the publicity will, will go out sometime next week. United Way has indicated that they will cede this fund with a significant amount, significant amount somewhere in the neighborhood of five figures and possibly even six figures. So this will be a significant effort, a significant partnership with our neighbors in Matapan, Dorchester, and Hyde Park. And it, it will hopefully bring some much-needed help to a lot of people in Milton, in Matapan, in Dorchester, and in Hyde Park. So sorry to go on. Questions or comments from the members?
Let's go. Let's go.
Ms. Collins?
Oh, I concur. Looks good.
Okay. All right, there was a lot of, I think it's fair to say there was a lot of enthusiasm on the call today, and so so hopefully we can get this thing kicked off next week and raise some money to help some people who really need in our, in our communities, in our community and in the communities neighboring.
Just one question.
Yes, Mr. Wells?
So just one, so town council's good? We're all good? Okay.
Yep, he's, he, this 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 small paragraphs of a understanding work plan. And the city councilors have indicated that they, that they wouldn't need any additional process or approval. They may file it, they indicated, with the council. But in terms of this, they think that they are, that they are good to go. At least the chiefs of staff have. So so, so there's a little more work to be done to get everything going. And, but, but I think there's a lot of enthusiasm for it.
Okay, thank you. Let's go.
Okay, we should probably take a vote to approve this, this, this document. And so in the event that it needs to be signed, so, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to it to approve the Neighbors Together Fund for COVID-19 work plan.
So moved.
I think Katie, Katie, Melinda started this. They should make the motion in a second.
I'll second Melinda's motion.
There you go.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you for that. Item 7 is an update from our Mass Port advisory representative, Mr. Tom Dougherty. And so Hillary, if you could unmute Mr. Dougherty.
Hello.
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
Good evening, Tom.
Hi. So let me give a brief update. I'll give these a couple of parts. A brief update on the runway 4L environmental assessment, and then a brief update on the MIT study as it relates to runway 27 departures, runway 33L departures, runway 4R arrivals. That's going to be brief. But then lastly, I'm going to return to runway 4L environmental assessment, which kind of ties some of the things together. So in February, before the planes stopped flying due to COVID-19, I had reached out through different means, including putting some notice, hot-page ads and slash slash notice in the Dorchester Register and the Matapan Register to try to make sure the people were there, were aware of the environmental assessment and invite them to participate. Because keep in mind, this is not an MCAC matter. It's a citizen matter initiative. I also personally looked out to see if I could identify and possibly engage a, an independent consultant knowledgeable and without FAA conflict to help with regard to the EA process. And at that point, I had also asked through the MCAC at the general meeting in January and reiterated it that with respect to the proposed process at that time for the EA, FAA was proposing that they would have a finalized environmental assessment followed by a comment period such that the comment period was one in which there was a time limit, the time was ticking, and the the analysis had already been essentially baked by the FAA. Didn't, I wanted to change that to have a pre-meeting among, you know, residents and participants to be able to ask questions and be able to see whether or not they had already thought about some of the issues that we'd like them to think about. That's where we were before the you know, the lockdown. And then with the lockdown, I got concerned about how it would be that the time might pass and we might not get engaged. All right, so let me fast forward. At the point that I had asked the MCAC to consider what, what we would do with regard to, and how we would do it with regard to the EA given lockdown, FAA itself announced that what it proposed to do was to proceed with no pre-meetings with, therefore, the FAA would again have a finalized environmental assessment and with only a virtual meeting that would be more of a show and, and not so much, a show and tell, not, not an interactive meeting of the kind that we would, we would ideally want. So what I did was I went to the MCAC Executive Committee, of which I'm a member, and I said, this doesn't work. We need to rethink this. In fact, given the emergency situation, absent some significant change, we really ought to ask for a postponement of the time period because if the virtual meetings without a pre-meeting were to occur in September were to happen, it's problematical for a number of reasons, which I'll get to in the motion that I asked them to last week to consider, and which they considered and they adopted, and a request to the FAA, which I'll come to in a minute, was unanimously approved. And Hillary, if you're there, could you put the first of these slides up? Yeah, so maybe we can go back up to the top of the page just to begin so everyone will see what this is. So this is a letter to the FAA Regional Administrator and others by the MCAC at my request. Mrs. De La Sandro is the Regional Administrator, who has been very responsive to every request I've made for information. We'll see what happens with respect to this. And it is directed toward the timeline and the process, which I think needs rethinking in light of the COVID-19 emergency. So now we could go, and this will be posted tomorrow, so you'll see the entirety of it. But basically, it says, we don't think a September timeframe and the virtual meetings work. So for these reasons, okay, as it says, three reasons here in the first page, that residents are dealing with a COVID-19 health incidence, and quite a number of the residents, certainly if you take the Matapan, the Dorchester, and other, other residents are dealing with. They may be essential workers, transit employees, healthcare providers. And in any event, their families are dealing with lots of their COVID-19 situations and family needs. Second, if there are to be any kind of meetings among participating residents, it's hard for them to have the kind of preparatory meetings that they would have. So let's go down, Hillary, to the next part of this. One of the aspects of the EA happening now on the FAA's thinking is that, well, we need to get it done, and there could be safety reasons if there's use of a of a path that, and this is the only path, RNAV path, for which there is no safety analysis completed for Logan. Well, thank you very much. They themselves delayed that for a number of years, and there are very few flights flying, so I don't think the safety issue is, is a, is deep a concern as it might otherwise be. Third, one of the things that the communities, the residents, and certainly I, would like to do is fieldwork, not, as was mentioned in the public comment, nor did I say in last week's executive committee meeting that it has anything to do with the proximity of 4L to 4R. That's just false. This would be fieldwork and analyses about the 4L path itself and comparison, as it says, with the model assumptions as contrasted with actual path facts. And that's not easy to do if the planes are not flying. Now, it so happens that with the help of that expert, I did before, without knowing COVID was coming, I did before the planes stopped flying, I did some analysis of the modeled altitude versus actual altitude on the 4R path, which by the way, again, referring to the public comment period there. The 4L path that we are looking at is the RNAV path, and the waypoints for that path were confirmed in writing that the waypoints that I said were the waypoints for that 4L path, the Regional Administrator, with the help of the FAA confirming them for her, were confirmed as exactly the ones I'm talking about. So let me go on. The next thing has been mentioned in another context tonight. For some people, virtual meetings are problematic. They may not have the ability that they would otherwise have, that others might have, to participate as contrasted with an in-person meeting. So for all those reasons, the request, as presented to the Executive Committee and as endorsed by them and as presented in this letter, is to defer the EA until the later of either January 1, 2021, or two months after the flights resume some type of frequency similar to what is expected in future years, keeping in mind that one aspect of the EA is to look five years out. No more than five, but no, no less than that. And how do they do that until they know something about how they're flying again? And that's the nature of this request. It was made last week, and we'll see, we'll see what happens. So let me then move next, if we could. Hillary, to the, that's the second page. Let's go. Oh, yes, yes. This will have to be turned to, hold on. There we go. Yep, there we go. So this is, this is the FAA's own slide as to what is the boundary area. And you'll see, obviously, Matapan, Dorchester, Milton are significantly part of that boundary area for this 4L environmental assessment. And if we go to the next one, which is similar to this, but adds some facts, you'll see that the, especially the dark blue, there's the minority poverty threshold exceeded area, and so I believe that appropriately FAA should be particularly focused on that. It has a number of ramifications, which is in and of itself. They need to take into account what's called environmental justice to be sure that they're not unduly burdening those residents. At the same time, given the fact that there are a number of other paths for 4L itself and for our close by, all of that has to be taken into account as well. And I'll come back to that when we, when I wrap up. So let's go forward then. That's the status of the to turn this one to. But that's the status of the EA as we, as we, as we sit here. On the one hand, no planes flying. On the other hand, the idea that sometime late, late summary, that summer, the FAA would conclude its analysis and then in September have virtual meetings without any pre-meetings. And we're trying to make that be adjusted in a more appropriate way under the circumstances. So let me just take a second on runway 27, which also was, we supported the Roselandale effort to take a look at that waypoint adjustment and that initiative. And I provided an illustration of the way in which we thought that could be and should be supported and recommended. And I presented that slide, and it's on the Milton website under the MCAC setting on November 14, showing the path as, as I would say redesigned and, and as I had spoken about with the Roselandale MCA representatives, saying, look, this is what you could do, and it doesn't, and as illustrated and as redesigned, it wouldn't affect Milton in the, or Matapan in the adverse way that you have been illustrating it before. And that was adopted. Now, on December 26, the Roselandale representative himself adopted that call it a redesign such that Milton, Matapan would not be affected. So that, as it says, 27 waypoint relocation, this is a quote, "would not shift traffic to neighborhoods to the east that are already exposed to arriving traffic heading to landings on runway 4L and 4R," namely, Boston neighborhood of Matapan and Milton. That's what the MIT study is asked and is to look at, not anything other than that. So let me, so that's all I have to say on that. I just want to be clear. So if we go to the next slide, please, thanks. Here's the, here's the MIT study. Now, last Friday, a few days ago, there was a MIT's team met with representatives on, MCAC representatives on various dispersion ideas raised by the Belmont, Cambridge, Somerville, Arlington, Medford communities, both their representatives and their elected officials. And they provided that MIT update. In summary, the discussion was indeterminate. The discussion continues. A couple of key, key, key thoughts came out of that. Those proponents would prefer and have as their, I think, fair to say, highest priority that there be what's called airport, Logan Airport Controller Dispersion Administration of Dispersed Departure Paths. So it would be controller-based dispersion, in a word. And if I understand the reaction of the FAA itself, attendees at the meeting, that's a non-starter in the sense that the the capability, the training of the controllers to administer paths in that way is, is not what it used to be, and indeed, not the direction that FAA is going, whether we like it or not. They're going toward a much more RNAV-type a computer-based methodology that is administered by the controllers, but not controller-based path creation and administration. I'm just, I'm just reporting what I understand to be, to be the case. There another takeaway was that with regard to a, in that, in their case, a dispersion of paths, otherwise perhaps by means of extra RNAV paths. In their case, they had, they had multiple extra RNAV paths that they had in combination or, or, or singular. And, and again, the discussion continues, but it was that, well, keep in mind, there are limit, this is, this is from MIT. This is from Hansp, not FAA. This is from Dr. Hansp, sorry, not FAA. But that there are constraints in the, in the, the Flight Management System, FMS, as it presently is constructed, such that there are limits to the amount of computer path capability you can, you can introduce into that. I'll sort of leave it there because that's, you know, presumably always the case until it becomes a higher priority, just as we've seen in the extreme case of, you know, vaccines recently. But until FAA makes it a priority, that'll be the case. So that continues. Then as to 4R runway arrivals. arrivals, obviously, we've got the various dispersion ideas that we've raised, and that MIT itself has put forward, which were reviewed last November, when I, at the town meeting then. So we haven't yet had the equivalent of the runway 33 meeting. We'll have that, and that's to be scheduled next, while in parallel, the 33 discussion continues. So let's go to the next slide, please. All right, so here, I'm coming back to runway 4L to sort of make clear to everyone that the 4L RNAV environmental assessment has a context that is extremely important to keep in mind. So that RNAV path is one of only several ways in which the planes are approaching runway 4L. And consequently, it's that multiplicity of approaches, all to 4L, RNAV and otherwise, that create, you know, one of the components that we're dealing with with regard to overflights, and that's separate from 4R. So let's take this one at a time. What I asked the FAA Regional Administrator, Colleen DeLisandro, I said, "Please go to your specialists and come back to me to answer specifically, in addition to the RNAV path, what other paths are there to be, or are there to be authorized for landing aircraft on 4L?" And here they are. And these are their words. So the "we" means FAA, because this is a quote. "So one, when weather goes below 3,000 feet," and that's still pretty good, "we can make an instrument approach to 4R and circle to 4L." Well, and I'll stop there, but we do see that all the time. And indeed, we used to see it extremely frequently when they had, they were repairing 4L. And so there was the 4R offset, where they would come in on 4R and then ship. Next, "we can also conduct an instrument landing approach to 15R. 15R is way up in the northwest side. That's the runway that you're landing on 15. That's the opposite of 33L. You're landing on 15R northwest. When the pilot reports Boston in sight, the tower clears the aircraft for a visual approach all the way over the harbor to runway 4L. It's only good in certain weather conditions." Come back to that. Next, "when circling from runway 4R, we can use about an 800-foot ceiling and two miles visibility." So they can go all the way down to an 800-foot ceiling and two miles visibility. And last, "when the pilots are aware that they will be getting a visual approach to runway 4L, they have the ability in their flight management system to build a course and an artificial glide slope if they choose. It would all depend on workload and the company requirements." So let me give you an example of that. I spent December and January trying to understand why it was that the JetBlue path was deactivated. But the JetBlue path is a perfect example of what they now say that the pilots themselves and the company, if they choose, given the workload and the company requirements, could create. So one of the concerns among many for this EA is to understand to what degree the RNAV for 4L will be part of a larger attempt to increase the frequency and volume of planes landing on 4L and 4R collectively, in the context of an EA that said, "Well, we gave a Fonzie, finding of no significant impact," on the assumption and understanding that this is not going to have an impact on the total volume. And I know the way FAA computes total volume may be different than the way that we think about it, but I'll leave it there. This is just to suggest that a lot of work needs to happen when there is a comment period and before it, to put all these pieces together, in order to convince the FAA, who's using the DNL standard that is extremely favorable to them, that notwithstanding that, there may be elements taken together that suggest alternatives to what they think might happen in a very narrow approach to it, need to be taken into account. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Tom. Hillary, if we could, we can take off the screen, and I will ask the members if they have any questions or comments.
Just a one.
I just, I thought Mr. Scottley might have a question. This is your, the two of you, this is your bailiwick way more than mine. And I just want to say, as someone who really has, who's not, is in-depth in this, as many of you are every day, I'm impressed with the amount of work you're doing here. And I'm also impressed with the fact that it appears that the number of unanimous votes you get on the issues that you propose or bring forth to the MCAC clearly illustrates your developing an expertise in this and working very hard for our community. I just want to say thank you, Tony, for that.
Well, thanks.
Other comments or questions from the members?
I don't really have any questions, Tom. Just thank you for the update, and I hope we're able to get that extension. We really need it, for all the reasons that you stated in the MCAC letter. So thank you for submitting that request.
Mr. Scott, I just say one more time. I just want to talk, this been, you know, you see that, I mean, obviously, COVID has ground air travel to a halt. You hear the national and the international reports as to the effects that that has had on the environment and the climate. You see someone is brilliantly regarded in the financial market as Warren Buffett taking his money out of the airline industries and thinking that they may not get back to where they were. Is there any thought amongst those that study, and those who are so deeply involved in airline congestion and airline noise and quality of life issues, seeing these environmental benefits that have started to think, maybe we need to look at going down, you know, a different road here? Maybe we should take a little bit different path. As you see, it'll be a long time before people start to GM cells and buses and trains again. And that has been government's answer to traffic congestion, has been mass transit. And I think COVID has showed us a curveball here that we have to rethink this, which is why we see so many people from working for them. But I know that's a long-winded question I just asked you, but I just wonder if that topic's come up at all.
Well, it's come up, and there's so many complexities to it. Can you imagine if there's a testing protocol that has to happen at Logan Airport? All of the capacity, I'm talking about the space within which to do that, is on the other side of the security screen, where so many restaurants and shops and coffee shops and donut shops, all of that retail space is on the wrong side, and people all the way back out to the garage area. So it's, I don't know. I don't know enough to know, other than that there's a lot of concern among those who do know, that with regard to the disappearance of major air carriers, which isn't, you know, it isn't, it isn't an easy issue, and administration at Massport itself, and other major airports. So it's a bad pun, but it's up in the air. It's just too many balls there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other comments or questions from the members? I will say, with respect to runway 27, this is a good result. Beginning late last summer, there was a small but loud group organized by Cindy Christensen and her Facebook group, BOS Fair Skies, that engaged in a campaign to accuse and disparage and demean this board for its efforts to prevent more planes from coming over to the center of Milton from runway 27. Time and again, we explained that our approach was consistent with the town's efforts to reexamine runway 27, and to be part of the conversation to advocate for Milton's interests, and that's what happened. But in response, in emails, in Facebook posts, and in paid advertisements, and letters to the editors published by the Milton Times, they said we were liars. They said we were not truthful. They said we obfuscated. In one letter published in the Milton Times, Judith Gunderson said that this board had agreed to an FAA request to change the runway 27 departure path from Boston neighborhoods to Milton. There's no truth to that. There was never any such request, and this board never agreed to anything like that. But it was published in the Milton Times. Suzanne Knight organized a campaign of letters to the FAA that falsely stated that this board made decisions without community input, without public notice. That was all belied by the videos and the public meetings and the public notices. They said we were irresponsible. They said we were uninformed. They said we had no moral compass. They called us pathetic, disingenuous. They called us hypocritical. They called us hopeless. They called us confused. They called us shameful. They called us offensive. They said we had contempt for the citizen residents of Milton. They said we were corrupt. Everything that was said about this board by that group was likely within the bounds of the First Amendment. First Amendment allows irresponsible speech. It allows toxic speech. But nothing that was said, or nothing that was done by that group helped this town in its efforts to improve air traffic equity. I'm proud of this board, and I'm proud that through all of this, that this board stayed the course. This board didn't succumb to false propaganda. It didn't succumb to loud voices with agendas. This board and the MCAC rep kept working hard for the residents of Milton and achieved a good result here. It's good news that the FAA is responding to this town's request for information from the MCAC rep. It's good news that the MCAC is adopting our request and advocating for this town, on behalf of this town with the FAA. And so we have a long way to go on this. But there is some good news here. There is some good news on runway 27. There is some good news with the MCAC, and there is some good news with the FAA. We have a long way to go, but we're making some progress. Any other comments or questions from the members?
Okay. Just thank you for your efforts, Tom. We appreciate it.
We thank you for your help and support.
Thank you, Tom. I'd make quarterly report from the planning department. Hillary, if you could unmute Bill Clark.
Good evening. So I have my report right here, and I'll read it off, and you can give me questions either during or after. Milton's Planning Department assures careful stewardship of the town's land, environment, water, air, energy, et cetera, providing guidance and protection to ensure a high quality of life for Milton residents today and into the future. Town planning involves research and analysis, strategic thinking, urban design, public consultation, policy recommendations, implementation and management, development of land in the public interest, and has an important influence on property values in our AAA bond rating. Our efforts also have contributed to the town's qualifications and reputations as an award-winning community, repeatedly voting among the best places to live by experts. We work to help developers and homeowners navigate the process while adhering to established policies and laws of Milton, with an eye towards careful growth, finding innovative solutions while protecting the town, its neighborhoods, and its residents. During the last calendar year, we've got four approval-not-required, the Form A lots, one amended special permit, one pending special amended special permit, one subdivision, three scenic roads, and five site plan approvals. Developments that come under the planning board heading through today, we have a definitive subdivision that starts its public hearing process June 11th at 227 Pleasant Street. Five single-family homes on a 68,930 square foot lot. There'll be a new road. There'll be a private way, so no plowing by the town, no road care by the town. The definitive subdivision should be with the planning boards, should get the planning board's approval during June of 2020. Right now, the stormwater for the developments currently being peer reviewed, and the plans are being tweaked by the project engineer to address your review comments. And all departments meeting would take place on that project the first week in June, so that would happen before the June 11th meeting. Special permits. Walcott Woods, Northland's property up in the Carberry Estate, 54 townhouses on 49 acres. That project will have six affordable units off-site. The development's currently underway but slowed by the COVID. The roadway layout is being constructed. The first building is being retrofitted. That's the Devon's house, the fun site. Three additional homes are being planned immediately behind that. The utilities are being installed, and the walls have been moved. So they are working. They're just working a little bit slower than if we did not have the COVID virus. Other applications that have been approved, Marine Way, which is 245 Highland Street, seven buildable lots in a cluster development. Site work started. Roadway is in. Stormwater structures are in. Utilities have been, the entrance walls have been repaired, and they're in. The first new house is occupied. The second new house should be ready for occupancy by the end of summer of 2020. The third house, the existing house, is staying, and plans for house number four are before their architects now. Woodlow Drive, the Pulte Development at Town Farm, created under a cluster development. There are 10 certificates of occupancy that have been given by inspectional services. The 11th certificate should be done, should be asked for by the beginning of July. Number 12 should be the middle of July, and number 13 should be the beginning of August. 22 lots are either sold or under agreement. There is one lot left, and that is the lot immediately adjacent to the men's house. I've asked the board for some guidance on what we could do with the men's house. We'll come back with that at another time. There are two affordable units being retrofitted by Pulte at 199 Church Street. These units should be occupied by the end of the summer. It will be a DH, Department of Housing and Community Development, required marketing effort, an in-depth financial review of the applicants, and a housing lottery. After the lottery, people should be able to move into those houses, and I would expect by the end of summer that we could reach that goal. Wentworth Farm Road. It's off of Ford Ranch Road. It's a 10-lot cluster subdivision, a 13-acre site. The road and utility construction started in August of 2017 with the sequencing of build a bridge first to get into the site, do the road layout and utilities. The bridge is completed. The roadway layout is done. The utilities have been installed in the right-of-way. The bridge has been completed. The required drainage structures have been installed. Water, gas, electric, and cable are already in. And presently, there is one house framed, and one new foundation expected next week. 475 Adam Street, two residential units over to commercial by special permit from the zoning board of appeals with site plan approval by the planning board. Construction was completed. Commercial tenants are in place. One residential tenant is in place, and there is an offering for one. 25 Bryant Ave. It was bought by an orthodontist who is retrofitting the building to bring his practice to Milton. 524 Adam Street. It's a office building owned by the Falcones. Here's a case where we're growing our commercial size without increasing the commercial footprint. More than half of the second floor was not accessible because of ADA requirements. The new design for that building will put an elevator into the back. I expect the earliest occupancy of that building would be spring of 2020. I expect the earliest occupancy of that building would be spring of 2021. 7 Pleasant Street, dense building. Five micro apartments were approved by the planning board. 3,000 square feet of commercial space on the top floor. 3,000 square feet on the street level. There'll be a new cafe. There'll be a new commercial kitchen, both on the ground floor. The site work is completed. All the exterior work is virtually completed. There's a new driveway. There's new fencing, new plantings, new exterior lighting. And presently, I think the earliest occupancy there might be September. The 40Bs. Planning Department's been working with the planning board on the site eligibility letters. So there are letters that have been produced for the Ice House, 648 Canton Ave, 592 Blue Hill Ave, and the East Milton Residences. Planning Department's been working with the Barrett Group and doing a follow-up to the ULI report, looking at creating an East Milton overlay. That's a long-term, long-range plan. Projects not under the planning board umbrella but under planning. The animal shelter building. I handle the site issues for the selectmen and the property off the old landfill access road. Wetland identification, the civil engineering issues, the utility locations. I've been handling the day-to-day committee issues regarding the programming and design, next steps. Been working with John Flynn and Mike Kelly on creating the request for qualifications for an owner's project manager. Response is due June 10th, 11 o'clock. There is a mandatory sidewalk scheduled for Wednesday, the 27th, at 11 o'clock. The next steps for that are the construction documents going out to bid. I've been working with John Flynn on those. We brought the engineer, not the architect, into that today to work on specific forms, and John will have it done shortly. Master Plan Implementation Committee. Milton Village, Milton Waterfront. We've been doing a lot of that work with MAPC Technical Assistance. Originally, the planning department wrote and applied for a technical assistance grant from MAPC. We did get one. We now have draft zoning that's going to the next town meeting after our June 15th meeting. That article has been going through very extensive studies with the planning board and the public. Committees staffed by the planning board are Traffic Commission. It's an advisory committee to the selectmen. The planning director is a member per the town's general bylaws. The committee meets as necessary. It's called by its chairman, the town's DPW director. Telecommunications design review committee, three-member committee that approves cell tower locations staffed by the planning department, sorry. Affordable Housing Trust is a five-member committee appointed by the selectmen, staffed by the planning department. Sign review committee, a five-member board appointed by the selectmen, staffed by the planning department. Committee meets as necessary when signage applications are submitted to the building department. The Home Program. Federal funding through HUD for affordable housing efforts. Milton belongs to the South Shore Home Consortium, which is Quincy, Braintree, Weymouth, Milton, and Holbrook. Presently, Milton has approximately 135,000 in funds waiting for a major affordable housing production project to be brought forward. Green Communities. As many of you already know, the town of Milton was designated as a green community back in 2010. Since becoming a green community, the town has reduced its overall energy consumption by more than 25% nationwide. Each year, in order for the town to maintain its green communities designation, we are required to update our annual report to green communities and mass energy insight. This is a very time-consuming process. Once we complete our annual reporting, we're allowed to competitively participate in more energy grant funding. Starting this year, we are only allowed to apply for up to $100,000 due to the number of additional communities now applying for green community funds. Typically, we would have applied for about $250,000. Since 2011, the town of Milton has received 1.3 million in green communities grants and DOE R-funded grants. Over the same period of time, the town's received approximately 300,000 in energy funding and other grants to assist us with the energy upgrades throughout the town. The good news is that it doesn't stop here. Over the last five years of energy projects, the town's efforts continue to bring energy savings for the entire town, plus to $350,000 a year. This year, Mr. Ritchie and I have applied for $98,000 of lighting upgrades for the library. Yesterday, we were notified that we'll receive 13,800 from EverSource in matching funds towards the state project. Hopefully, Milton will hear positive news from DOE during the summer of 2020. That's it.
Thank you, Bill. Quite an extensive report. A lot of work being done. Questions and comments from the members? Mr. Wells?
So a couple of questions. Let's go to the landing first. Can you just give us a quick update? I know that on the NPIC funding, Charles Engineering was awarded a couple of projects. One is to design a new boat ramp, and the other is some of the dredging around that. Do we know where they are at in this process right now? I know we have our Chapter 91 license. Congrats. That's a good thing. Just, I was reading through the NPIC final report today, and I saw those three things were funded. I know you're working on it around now.
I actually did talk to Charles last week, and they are in contact with DEP, and they're answering a few questions for them. DEP wants to know, one, is there a history of dredging at Milton Yacht Club? And the answer is yes, but now I have to find when those took place and how it happened. Two, there has been other dredging that has taken place in the ACEC itself, in the Napa Sedestuary. And that would be Old Colony Yacht Club, Norfolk Yacht Club, Norwood Marine, and... That's if the dredging. I know that they may have done some other cleanup in a few other places, but all of those have to be answered. That's part of what Charles is coming up with, working on those issues, too. Charles also has a dredge spoilage sampling program that has to go through DEP and Army Corps. And they want to know the history part before they address the the plan for where the dredge, how much dredge spoilage, cook them out, and where it could go. The ramp part of it, it's just, they're trying to address the historic part first, address the ACEC issues. I do know that the yacht club is in the ACEC. The yacht club building is not in the ACEC. The boat ramp and the dock are in the ACEC. The parking lot that is 41 is in the ACEC. 44, now 88, Wolf, is not in the ACEC. The piece of land that the farmer's market takes place on, that's in the ACEC. The MBTA parking lot, which is right behind it, is not in the ACEC. So it's a very strange line that was drawn by the state back in 1990. So we're stuck having to do a history report for DEP. Richard, you're muted.
Richard? You're still muted. You're still muted, Richard.
There you go. There you go. Go ahead. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So one piece of info, just quickly, it came from Senator Golden's meeting. Jay Cashman, who's doing the dredge of the North Channel in Blossom Harbor now, did the last dredge in the Napa Sed in Milton, and it was in 1983 is when he did it. So maybe you can find some of that somewhere in Town Hall. And then just my last point. We received a complaint. I think Katie and I both went up, was on the fence at Bent, so I've been watching that pretty regularly. I know that we went for our initial walkthrough. He was aiming June 1st to be occupied. I see no activity going on up there for over a month. And maybe Mr. Denny can weigh in on this. I understand they're waiting. He's doing a hearback from us to proceed forward on this, just given where we're at and how important it is to try and get the projects we have approved moving. If we could maybe just kind of get that going, because I think I'm at like three weeks and nine days since I've seen anything happen up there at all, so...
He can't do anything until he gets a sign-off on his rough interior. He can't put insulation into the building. The next step is to put the insulation in. That's where he is.
Inspection?
Inspection Services.
Mr. Denny, if you could just maybe check on that tomorrow, just if we get as much of our economy moving as possible, it'd just be a good thing.
Certainly, yeah. I'll follow up, Mr. Pronbeck.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no further questions. That was all in the report.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Conlon?
I have one. Bill, you mentioned in your report Bryant Ave, and the orthodontist that's, I think, purchased that property is going to be making some renovations. That brought to mind something I've been meaning to bring up, which is that I happened to turn on a planning board meeting a few weeks ago and heard that discussion and was not aware of that proposal. And I really liked it and thought it was a good one. And it's a real improvement to that building, which suffers from being, I think, a 1960s-era design that... I guess, I don't know what the story was back then, but the architectural standards were a lot different than they seem to be in subsequent decades. It's been an eyesore for a lot of people for a long time. So I think that's the sort of thing that our board would maybe even have an interest in weighing in on before the planning board, but it's the sort of thing that I think we, in our roles as a select board, which does include a planning component to it, even though we have an elected planning board, I think we have a role in planning as well. There's probably some way that we can work on making sure that something significant like that is brought to the attention of our board when it first comes in the door, so that the planning staff just flags those for us. I'm not talking just anybody trying to divide a property into two lots for a residential home or something along those lines, but something affecting the business districts or that may have some particular interest in the town. I think it would be good if we can flag those so that it's not only the planning board that's aware of it, but our board is aware of it as well. And we can figure out a process for that, but I think that's important going forward.
This is one he's going to wind up putting in. New windows, new siding, handicap doors. And he's revitalizing a dormant building. His tax value will be going up with work he's going to be doing to the building.
Yeah, it's a big improvement.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Collins?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the report because I think we can forget all that's going on and the many hats the planning department wears. And I just wanted to say thank you to our director and his assistant because they've been helping the Affordable Housing Trust think through the whole rental program idea and alerting us about all kinds of resources that we can look at to hopefully help residents as the process of moving forward and hopefully reopening continues.
Thank you for your comments.
One more question. Just, Melinda made me think of this. The two houses on Church Street that have been, will those count?
One house, two units, two family houses.
Will those two units count on this year?
Yes.
So towards the...
So that's... Subsidized housing inventory list, yes.
So we have to find 48 more?
Two, I guess.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know. I heard you say it, and the report was so long, I couldn't remember all the things. All right, thank you. Thanks again.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Bill. Thank you for a very detailed and elaborate report. Thank you very much. Sorry to keep you.
We're going to be executive session, too.
Oh, we have executive session tonight. That's right, on the...
Hillary's going to send me connection.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, Bill. Item nine, without objection, we will defer the reapport, reappointment to the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Item 10, without objection, we'll defer the reappointment to the Conservation Commission. Item 11, reappointment to the Cultural Council. Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Susan Bertram with 6 Berlin Avenue, Deborah Fedrocki of 24 Hudson Street, Allegra Murray of 36 Elliott Street, Avita St. Andre and Avita St. Andre of 61 Wood Street, and to appoint Mary Dugan of 80 Countryside Lane to the Cultural Council through May 31st, 2021.
Motion's... Second, any discussion?
I also want to, I see there's a note here. I want to thank the following members who have reached their term limits or be leaving the council as their appointment ends, as their appointment end dates. Chris Hart, Allison, I'm reading with a small print here. Allison Moll and Lisa White. Did I say Allison's last name correctly?
Allison Moll, yeah.
Okay, Allison Moll. And thank them for their time and service.
Yes, certainly. Thank you to all of those, to those three members, Mr. Hart, Ms. Moll, and Ms. White, for their service. Any other discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Motion's been made, second, and Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Who else?
Yes.
Who else, yes? Item 12, is for approval of a taxi license. We have the sign-off from the Police Department on the annual inspection of the parked cab license. However, not yet had the inspection from the sealer of weights and measures in part, or maybe solely because of the COVID-19 issue, has precluded him from taking a ride in the cab. So we have the sign-off from the Police Department. We don't yet have the sign-off from our sealer of weights and measures. I suppose we could defer this to a future meeting. The alternative may be to approve this, and I'll have to check and see if this is all right with Mr. Denny here or Mr. Flack. Perhaps we can approve this in a short period of time. Yet, a...
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, Mr. Denny.
So Jim McCullough did some research today. We can defer it, and we do have time. Based on the COVID-related incident that you described, where Mr. Kelly could not ride in the vehicle to ensure that the meter was working properly, we have been allowed an extension of 90 days. So this can certainly be deferred.
Oh, okay. So he can continue in business, and he has an additional 90 days, as do we?
Correct.
Okay. So without objection, we'll defer that until our sealer of weights and measures can conduct his review. All right, item 13, discussion of the Select Board Goals and Objectives from last summer. We have deferred this a couple of times. If it's okay, I'd like to go down the list to see how we're doing on some of these things. And certainly, if a member wants to defer on any of the items or all the items, feel free. wants to defer on any of the items or all the items, uh, feel free. Um, but I'll start. I have the, uh, the items of, um, financial stability and revenue and working to establish sustainable levels of operating expenses and revenues, focusing on the following. Number one, the solid waste budget gap for FY twenty-twenty. That was an item that we were able to clear, uh, at the town meeting, um, last December. Two is the FY twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one budget, uh, which we have, uh, done a lot of work on, particularly Ms. Conlon and, um, and Ms. Collins and Mr. Dennehy and, and, uh, and Ms. Amy Dexter of the Accounting Department and our, our friends in the School Department and the School Committee. Uh, we had a balanced budget. And then because of COVID-19, we came up three million dollars short, and now we have another balanced budget, uh, that we've been able to do. We've been able to, um, to prepare for town meeting. Um, this is certainly nothing I take credit for, uh, but, uh, but I am certainly glad, glad, uh, and, uh, about the efforts and the results that we've had on that. Uh, three, uh, pilot, uh, we've had some improvement in pilot over the last year. Um, we hope for more. We've had some additional payments from Milton Academy, some additional payments from Kari College. We're still hoping for, um, uh, for, for some payments, uh, from Beth Israel Deaconess. Although we recognize, uh, certainly, uh, the effects of COVID-19, uh, may have, uh, may have an impact on that. But, uh, but we, but we hope, uh, we can continue on that effort. And then finally, long-term financial sustainability and economic development. In terms of sustainability, uh, I think the, the, the report on that is the approval of our, um, Budget and Financial Advisory, uh, Committee that is going to look at a long-term, uh, look at, uh, pressure testing, a long-term financial plan and putting into place a financial plan. And we just need to get that committee populated. And so hopefully we can, we can get that done. Uh, we've had a couple of, um, a couple of people, uh, with, uh, very good backgrounds expressed interest. So hopefully we can get that committee appointed in the next, um, in the next week or two. And so, um, uh, other than that, in terms of operating expenses and revenue, um, uh, the, um, the issue there certainly is, um, uh, the, the new world of operating expenses and revenue under the, uh, COVID-19 crisis. Uh, we don't know how that's going to shake out. We're doing our best day by day to, to deal with those issues. And certainly our finance committee is doing that. But I think we have a good structure in place. We were pretty nimble in dealing with the three million dollar deficit, again, through the efforts of our town administration and our finance committees. So, uh, so, uh, we'll continue in that, in that score. So that's my, that's my report. Does anybody wish to, 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 to go?
I have two comments.
Richard, yeah.
That was great job. Um, thank you for that. Two things. A, one on pilot, I think that you know, all three of them really, because as our public schools did, you know, kids in March got sent home on a Friday and never came back. And I'm sure that's tough. So if there ever a time that I think maybe compassion and patience may be a little bit necessary enough on our part, um, I'm willing to embrace that. The second thing is, I, I talked to Rep. Driscoll on Monday and then a follow-up conversation with Amy on Tuesday. As I believe you know, it looks like we're in that for around two million dollars on the cares that we can apply for. And this came after nine eleven, although it was different, it was more of a public safety, you know, with things. Um, that was how we built our Rio C, both police and fire. We received a lot of equipment. We got a lot of back in the big snow winter in two thousand and sixteen. We recouped a lot of federal money with that hundred-inch winter. Uh, I think Amy's on the right track as Mr. Dennehy is. I think every dollar that we can recoup from the state through the federal government in this crisis really can kind of help us get back on solid footing. And I'm sure Ms. Conlon would agree with me that if we can anyway, use some of this to get it back into our stabilization fund. I think that would be a good thing for our long-term forecast. So as we all know, these are uncertain times for us, but I think that we have some, as I said last, last night, as you may know, I was in a, a forum, a candidate's forum. And, uh, one of the things that I really felt strongly and do feel strongly about is not just on this board, but in every aspect of this community, our leadership from the Town Administrator's Office, our Department Eds, Amy, the schools that, um, they're very seasoned with this, and I think that we'll be okay in the long term. So, um, thank you for that. And I think that, uh, we're definitely, our ship got rocked, but, uh, it's right in itself and we may not be moving at warp speed or cruising speed, but we are moving forward. I think that's a good thing for the citizens of this town. I know that was all a wrong winded.
No, no, thank you. I think, I think it's a good point. Uh, you know, only this, uh, this two-point-four million dollars, I, I think we need to make clear, Mr. Dennehy will correct me if I get this wrong, but the two-point-four million dollars, right now, uh, we can only recoup expenses. And, and it's hard to, hard to think that we're going to have expenses, uh, actual expenses worth two-point-four million dollars, although I think we could, but we're not anywhere near that now. Uh, the key to that is if the legislation.
Absolutely. Yes.
For lost revenue. And that's, that's not currently as part of the legislation, but hopefully that'll be part of it and then we can. So hopefully that'll be a change that will help us out. It's not currently there. We can't, I think we can't bank on it, you know. You always try to be conservative, but I think, you know, we could continue on that road. And I think. Any other comments or questions on that, or what, if one of the members wants to go through their items? Ms. Conlon?
Mr. Chair, I gave my update on the airplane and traffic issues back in February, but actually it, earlier, and I can't open the document for some reason tonight, but I, I think those are the only two. They were in the category, the health category that I was responsible for reporting on. But I think tonight we had a very good report on what's been going on in the area of airplane noise through Mr. Dougherty. There's also the issue, and I think we touched on it again in February, that we're, you know, we've purchased an air quality monitor. We're working on a location for that. That's something we're working on at our Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. In the area of traffic mitigation, we had a, the final report that we acted on at the last meeting from the Traffic Mitigation Committee, which really was an outstanding committee and put forward a very good report. There's a lot of follow-up to be done on that, but I, I think those, both of the last two meetings have actually addressed the two categories that are under the reporting requirements I have.
Thank you, Katie. My apologies for forgetting your.
No, that's okay. That's all right.
Any other members, uh, comments, questions that want to report or want to wait until next week? Tony, I see. Are you lighting up or Belinda?
I, I'm, I'm happy to, to do my report. Um, I, I would like, just like to say that I'm still interested in that air noise project. I, I, I know we're having difficulty finding, uh, someone interested to take it up. But I still think it's worthy of consideration as, um, as things start to reopen, which really may not be for a while as far as airplanes are concerned. Um, but, but at any rate.
Just for the audience, you're talking about something other than the air quality monitor. You're talking about the AI, the buttons.
Right. That was brought up by Darrell Warner. Yes, that, that idea. Um, so, um, so I, I, um, my, under my purview for reporting was housing and community development. And actually, we just had quite a bit of that from, um, Bill Clark. But I can report that the Housing Production Plan was adopted by the Select Board and the Planning Board and then accepted by DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development in January. And, uh, around that time, uh, somewhat immediately thereafter, actually, uh, we had, uh, the introduction of forty, uh, four, forty Bs, um, and, uh, another one, the Ice House had happened, uh, just prior to that. So, um, we are working now, uh, uh, on pieces of the Housing Production Plan that have to do with zoning that, that could be helpful. So looking at the Governor's Stotin, um, the four acres, the Affordable Housing Trust was, uh, working with an architect to just look at conceptual designs to see what might, um, work there so that when we went to the AG's office, we would have something to, uh, illustrate what, what could be done, not what would be done, or what we were even necessarily thinking of. But, uh, our chair, Mike Zulis, and myself and Julie Kramer, who is the, um, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, spoke with Attorney Jonathan Green from the Attorney General's Office, and he, uh, wanted to take time to review trust documents. And last week, we, um, agreed that, uh, it might be time for Kevin Freitag, Town Council, to reconnect with him. One thirty-one Elliott Street, things are moving after, um, some difficulties with contamination, uh, at, at the site. But, uh, the first story, I believe, is being framed. Um, the, uh, Bill talked about the, um, East Milton Square forty R being worked on with, uh, Ms. Barrett and, um, the Planning Board. And he also talked about the zoning for the Milton Village Overlay District, so I won't talk about that. And, uh, I did mention the Ice House. Um, a small group that was, um, charged with meeting with the developer did so, and, um, there's been some redesign and they've received their product eligibility letter. That redesign was to try to bring it, the project more in line with the spirit of the original zoning that the neighborhood, um, and town meeting worked so hard to, to get passed, uh, with the property owner. So, um, Route one thirty-eight, there was not a project there at the time, but there have been a lot of things happening. Uh, as anyone who's attended a planning board meeting with, uh, Little Sprouts and one of the forty Bs, uh, can, can attest to, so there, there are things happening there. Town Center Planning, uh, uh, Mr. Dennehy might be able to, to chime in here. He was working on some things relative to, to Town Hall itself and, um, our Health Department actually, uh, about the time he was working on that, said that they, they would like to see if there could be some help for space with them. And the Master Plan Implementation Committee started to do quite a bit of work with MAPC and held a, a, a variety of meetings, one of which was with youth, which, which was a wonderful session. They came up with a lot of creative ideas and had, had some just terrific insights. And I, I, I thought the Master Plan Implementation Committee too, the members themselves, did such a great job of, um, of, of listening and communicating and appreciating. And the last thing is design guidelines. I've had some conversations with Cheryl Chigaias and Bill Clark and Allison Quinn, but there's a lot more research that would need to be done. It's a big undertaking because you also need a design review board. And it's not quite clear that we're there yet. Um, the Milton Village zoning might actually, um, if that passes, that might give us, um, some experience, uh, as projects come in with having a, a design board or something like that. And my report is now completed.
Thank you. Thank you, Melinda.
So, Mr. Chair?
Oh, you just, you just.
I muted you?
There you go.
All right. So two of my four, um, on the fire stations, um, they're well along in their design and headquarters. Um, same with, uh, Engine Four, Athenon Street. There's some mitigation that had to take place up there, and that's, I believe, if it hasn't started, it's about to start very shortly. And that'll be very short-lived. I can report there's been some productive discussions between, uh, the Chair, Brian Walsh, the Vice Chair, Dan Clark, and myself with the Astiasus, and I'm hoping that, uh, Kevin Freitag's been giving us some very good points. Um, this may require some more discuss between him and their legal counsel, but I think there'll be a positive outcome coming from that. I'm hopeful in that. And then with regard to, uh, the Wash Sewell and the Boat Ramp, we'll talk a little about that more in executive session tonight. But as, as the important part, as Mr. Clark alluded to, Charles Engineering is starting their work, which has been approved by, which was approved by the MPIC last year, and the Chapter ninety-one license has been issued. So I am, as you know, very, sometimes frustrated, but very hopeful that we will move this project forward. That's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Tony, do you want to give a report now, or do you have a defer?
I'm gonna defer at this time, Mike. Thanks.
Okay, that's great. I think, I think we're, I think it's, it's, given our timing, it's well taken.
Yeah, sorry. Everybody saw him now.
Item fourteen, uh, Town Administrator's Report.
Sure. Uh, first and foremost, uh, I want to remind everyone, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I want to remind everyone of a very special event that will be taking place on Monday under the leadership of Veteran Services Director Kevin Cook and American Legion Post Number One One Four Member Frank Stout. And with the support of Cemetery Superintendent Lisa Hearn, her staff, and Milton Access TV Director Michael Lynch, the town will honor the memory of our veterans with a virtual Memorial Day observance. Residents are asked to tune in to Milton Access TV at ten AM on Monday. Uh, the annual, the town's annual election will take place on Tuesday, June ninth. Town Clerk Susan Galvin is encouraging voters to vote by mail if at all possible for this election. For more information, uh, she's asking that you call her office Monday through Thursday, eight AM to five PM, or Fridays, eight AM to one thirty PM, six one seven, eight nine eight, four eight five seven, and they'll walk you through the procedure. I just want to make everyone aware that, uh, next week, all trash and recycling collections will be delayed one day townwide due to the Memorial Day holiday. And lastly, I'd like to wish everyone a happy, safe, and socially-distanced Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, item fifteen, the report of the Chair. I'll echo, I'll just echo what Mike said. We did do a public service announcement today. Um, and, um, it is very important, given the holiday, given the, the, the weather, given the beginning of summer, that we continue to take the guidelines on social distancing and staying at home when we can and covering our faces and sanitizing and isolating and quarantine. It's, it's critical that we continue to take these things seriously, particularly during this time, because there's a great temptation to, to relax, and that's certainly what we can't do. So, um, so I'll echo what Mike said. Uh, I hope everyone has a great weekend, but, but we need to continue to take these things seriously because, um, if we don't, then we'll be, we'll be, uh, things will continue to get even worse than they already are. So. Uh, any report, uh, reports from members? Ms. Collins?
Yellow report.
Mr. Farrington? Tony?
Oh, hi there. I'm sorry. I, I don't have anything to report.
Katie?
No report.
Uh, Richard?
Yes, just thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be brief. I've talked a lot tonight. Again, I want to echo everything that each of you said, and especially the caution that you've urged once again, Mr. Chair. It's, I don't want to see us go back to where we were on March second. Those were scary times. And, and even though it's still with us, we can't forget the sight of this, even though the sun and the warm temperatures are out. I do want to thank Lisa and Kevin. It was a privilege once again to be part of the flag. Something I take very personal, and it's just, uh, it's something I cherish, being able to put those flags in for the veterans and those who have served this country and our cemetery. And lastly, um, you know, kind of a follow-up on the United Way project. There are many in our country and even this community that are hurting. Over three thousand meals a week are being given out by our public school staff to residents of this community. Many wouldn't understand that. And I've always said, you know, when I rode around a police car, you don't always see everything behind the closed doors or behind, in houses, um, even though you're looking for it. Now's the time for us to try and be selfless. Uh, I had the privilege, it's something that Pauline and I have been doing for a while, to give blood at Children's Hospital on Wednesday. They are in desperate need. They're not coming out. No blood mobiles. They don't, they don't anticipate they will be out mobile again before August. And the American Red Cross, Children, I went to Children's, um, these are things, you know, supporting the Greater Boston Food Bank, you know, that supports our food pantry. I, I can't imagine how they must be feeling what they're facing. I can't imagine how they must be feeling what they're faced with each day. And so for those of us who can help, I think it's important for us every little bit we can do to try and help. And for us as leaders, I think it's important to push that message forward. So thank you for allowing me to do that. And happy Memorial Day to everyone here. And thank you, the service, everyone who served this great country.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard. All right, public comments, any public comment response from any of the members? I'll just say thank you to Senator Timmerley for what was a very elaborate report on all that's going up in the legislature. And hopefully they'll continue to get the work done that they've been getting done for the last two months. And certainly we're confident that our interests will be represented well up there by Senator Timmerley and Representative Driscoll and Colin as well. Any other public comment response?
I think Mr. Dougherty responded to Dr. Christensen's comments at public speak. So I don't think there's much more to add to what was already said.
I agree with Katie. And I think Mr. Zulis, you did so as well. Well, you did so very strongly and very much to the point.
Okay, all right. Item 19, approval of meeting minutes. Are we ready to move forward with the minutes of April 9th, 14th, 6th, May 8th, and May 18th? I'm sorry, May 6th and May 18th?
Mr. Chair, when I looked at the materials earlier, I only saw the May 18th minutes. It looks like these other three may be in OneDrive now. Could we defer the May 6th? Because it says that it's eight pages, but I haven't had a chance to read it.
Yep, that's fine.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead. We'll defer the May 6th. Katie, are we prepared to move on the April 9th or the April 14th? That was reconsideration. But those weren't in the drive, those were in the previous meetings. You may not have been able to see them.
No, but Hillary sent a note that it was mainly the end times just needed to be updated. So I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 9th and April 14th.
And how about May? How about May?
In May 18th, I'm sorry.
Motion's been made in second and any further discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Yes.
Who else?
Yes.
Zulis, yes. Item 19, thank you for that. Item 19, future meeting dates. We've been meeting weekly. We seem to need it. We had a scheduled meeting, I think, for next Wednesday. I think it's probably a good idea to schedule it in the event that we need it. That's my view. But comments or questions from members?
Do we have, Mr. Dennehy, do we have a lot? Do we have a lot if we met next Wednesday? Do we have a full agenda or no?
No, not too much particularly. I think the meeting schedule in the last two months has cleared the deck for most of the agenda items that had been lingering.
Sounds like we may need it for the Napontet Neighbors Together Fund anyway. So I think we should schedule a short meeting. This is something more that really needs to be added.
Good idea. And Carolyn fellas said she would refer a report as well. And it also will give us, it'll also give us some more time to see about the fallout of the Governor's reopen plan. So if there's no objection, we'll put it on. Does seven work? I mean, is that okay, Richard? Is that too much? Are we maybe a short?
No, I'm fine. Hillary, does it have to be five if somebody already booked for seven? It seems that every other week, I'll do whatever time you want.
Seven is better for me.
Thank you, Member Wells. The school committee is meeting at seven, so it would need to be at an alternate time.
Ken, I didn't hear what you said, Katie. Did you say seven or five?
Seven is better, you know, for work purposes.
Can we do it as a webinar? Can we do it as a webinars or?
Yeah, or it sounds like we may need to give the school committee the Zoom account. So could we do it at six then? If we can keep it to an hour?
I'm fine with that.
Let's do that. Let's do that. Let's schedule, if that works for the other members. Actually, I'm getting, we're getting a note from Mike Lynch. You can both meet at seven, only one can be live. That is the only issue. Well, we wouldn't want the school committee not to be able to be live. We wouldn't want to do that. We wouldn't want to deprive.
No comment.
The opportunity to be live. So do you want to do, Katie, if you can do it at six, maybe we can finish by?
Let's do six, yeah.
Then it'll be like those, yeah. So maybe we'll do it at six and then we can give up being live if we go over. All right, so we'll do it at six. We'll try, we'll keep it an abbreviated agenda for that. Maybe just go a bit later. Future agenda items, item 20. We have a new open meeting law complaint that actually we'll have to take up next Wednesday. So this will need to be on the agenda for next Wednesday. It's another open meeting law complaint from Cindy Christensen. The first one we responded to, our town council responded to on behalf with the view that it was no basis in fact of that complaint. This complaint was about our executive session on May 6th. And that executive session was to review her first open meeting law complaint. And the statement in here is that she's been written down as the reason General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A1 for executive session, which is what we listed, does not apply to open meeting law complaints. But apparently the Attorney General's Office has said that, according to the Attorney General's Office and quoting, "Our office has stated in past communication with public authorities, may meet in an executive session under purpose one, which is what we listed, to review open meeting law complaints against the body." So it seems like that is fairly dispositive, but we'll have to put that on the agenda in any event and have town council respond to it. So that will go on the agenda for next Wednesday. So time to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yep.
I do have one item. The town treasurer has reached out, wondering if he can get on the agenda for a ban issuance that would need the board's signature.
It sounds like we can get him on for next Wednesday.
Great, okay.
All right, so I will move to enter into executive session to consider names leased or volume of real property believing a discussion in open session will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating of the body specifically with 25 Wharf Street and.
41. Okay, go ahead. No, go ahead. You're right, keep going. You're right, my bad.
Not to return to public session, to open session.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Who else?
Yes.
Zulis, yes. So we are adjourning from public session. We will see you again on May 27th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you very much. Everyone have a wonderful Memorial Day. And please follow the social distancing guidelines.